...in the United States of America, in the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a living justice for all.
Prior to getting moving, excuse me, meetings started, Vargo is going to share a good story with us.
Yes, yes.
All right, Adam.
I'd like to introduce these two gentlemen standing beside me. It's Juan Aaron and Adam Stoffman. They are employees of the borough in the streets department. And I'd like to tell you, and I'm extremely honored to tell you, a little bit about what these two have done most recently. And I'm going to do it in a form of a proclamation. Whereas Friday, March 29th, 2019, began like any other day for the two Louisville Borough employees. Whereas what was to occur at 7:00 a.m. was unlike anything either I've ever experienced before. Whereas as they approached the area of Victory Park, to their shock, they saw a woman in the Juniata River. Whereas without hesitation, both jumped from their truck. Ronald emptied his pockets as he ran towards the river and with no concern for his own safety, entered the freezing water to rescue the drowning woman. Whereas Adam promptly contacted the necessary emergency services and as Ronald and the woman reached the shore, assisted him with her care. Whereas in just minutes, the Louisville Police Department and the FAME MS were on site to assist. Whereas such acts of heroism should not go unnoticed. So therefore, I, DA Vargo, Mayor of the Borough of Louisville, and on behalf of the Louisville Borough Council, staff, and the residents of the Juniata Valley, express our tremendous gratitude for such an act of bravery and kindness. We are extremely proud of both of you. I'm choked up, I'm sorry. You were gonna cry. It's nice to have something nice happen to nice people. And we wanted to take that opportunity to express it in front of the public. So we're so proud of what you have done. I mean, not everybody would have done that. So on behalf of all of us, you know, thank you so much for what you did.
Yeah, this is the, we received one bid for the mega deal from the lawmaker. You're gonna just go up or down when I read these prices. Okay, so this is gonna be the pickup of the plant prices. 2RC 780, close to what it's already at this year. 1B 1260, 2B 11, anti-skin 1150, E beyond 11, and 2A sto 810. And the 25-millimeter base is $69 a ton.
That's up a little bit.
The nine-and-a-half wearing core 65.
Up five dollars.
And the nineteen-and-a-half wearing core 55.
That stayed the same.
Stayed the same. And then the premium gold bat, 130.
Stayed the same.
Okay. So let's see if we're the only bidder or we're gonna live with these prices.
Okay. Do we have a motion to accept the bid? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Okay. Mary Bratton is here to give us some information. Hi, Mary.
At the last meeting, we were talking about LURDA, and there was some questions on exactly what constitutes a reassessment at the county level. You know, we were looking at whether LURDA was a viable option or not. And I think Frank Buetti had asked the question. So I invited Mary here to speak on behalf of the county as to reassessment and what they're looking for and what they use as a guidance to reassess properties. Come up here if you want.
It would be great, we can hear you. We refer to the assessment law when it comes to assessment of property, and currently the assessment law states that any improvements under $2,500 are not necessarily deemed cause for a reassessment or evaluation. So when we look at a building permit, we do see what's being done and what the cost of the improvements are. And it's actually subjective in that when we see if a property owner is putting in new windows and everything, that doesn't necessarily constitute an increase in assessment either.
Even if it's above the $2,500?
Even if it's above, right, depending on how it's assessed. Now, if we had it, for some reason, values very low because they came in on an appeal and they said, you know, the property wasn't in major disrepair, and we see that they're fixing it up, then we could say, okay, well, they put windows and they require improvements and we can make an adjustment for that. But normally, those types of new upgrades would not constitute an increase in assessment.
So when we were talking, it's mainly if they change the footprint, though.
Right, any additions would definitely be cause for an increase in assessment.
I had someone in my office today who was inquiring on one of the properties in town. It's about ready to fall down. And they were inquiring if there were any taxing setups. And I said, well, it's interesting you say that because the Borough Council is contemplating something. But if they bought an old property and totally brought it back to life, it's a condemned property now, would that constitute an assessment?
Well, it depends on how it's being assessed currently. For a lot of these older properties, the owners have never come in to appeal the values. And we don't just reduce the values based on condition. That has to be something that the owner comes to the point of appeals to do. So it would depend on how the property's currently being assessed.
What constitutes an improvement? Point of improvement?
Well, I think that the $2,500 mark is a place to start. That could be any number of things.
But you've already said that somebody, like the windows in, spend several thousand dollars, and it doesn't constitute an improvement. But then if the place is all dilapidated, it might constitute improvement.
Right, we have to look at how it's being assessed. Now, our current assessment's 20 years old. So the property 20 years ago might have been, you know, it might have been in decent shape. Whereas, you know, within the past 20 years, it's falling into disrepair.
But how is someone who is going to take on a blighted property know that they're going to get a tax abatement when the definition of the improvement is rather vague? How will they know?
Well, I think we have to consider whether the property has been reduced due to the condition to start.
Yes, but you're, I'm backing up here. This LURDA is to encourage people to rehab or fix up or do something about blighted properties. Well, how are they going to be encouraged when they don't know upfront whether or not they're going to get a tax abatement or get hit with additional tax? How do we encourage them? You don't know.
I think we would have to take a look at the areas that you're considering and see what the current assessment's on these properties.
Could they commit a request of assessment before they start working on their property and then an assessment?
Yes, we could give them what the current assessment is. Or they're, of course, always, they can appeal the property, they can apply something to appeal the property and have it lower based on the condition at the time they purchase it.
Do you have any business you need to contact your office?
Yes, yeah.
In other words, they can come to the assessment office and say, I have my eye on such and such a property, I'm planning on doing this, 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 and this, or my taxes going to go up.
We could, yeah, right.
You will do that.
We could, we could take a look at it and decide. Answering the questions that they got. They can't appeal unless they own it, they have to own it first before they can appeal.
But you would be able to tell them what the current value, book value is?
Right, right, yes.
And if they made these, whether it would be?
Yes, whether it would constitute an increase in assessment, yes.
As part of the LURDA, there's supposed to be an application that is put in. So once that application is put in, does that trigger a, if you will, an inspection potentially of the property to look at where it's assessed currently and then see if it qualifies based upon the improvement that's put forward either in the building permit or the information conveyed in the application?
That's actually a very good question. We haven't dealt with LURDA properties in the past, so I don't know, I don't have an answer to that. But I'm sure we would get a copy of that application.
That's what we're looking at now. And obviously, council had some questions. So if we had that application, you know, potentially that could address some of the questions that are being opposed to you now.
Yes, yeah, we could take a look at that, yes.
Okay.
Submitting with the application.
I have a question. Normal maintenance, okay? Now, in my case, okay, I'm looking at putting a new roof on my house, okay? The shingles are starting to wet. This time, it's been 30 years. Okay? Are you considering that because my house over $4,500, an improvement?
That is actually an improvement, yes.
Why, because I'm putting new shingles back on the roof?
Yes, yes. But we would take a look at how the property is assessed now, but it doesn't necessarily constitute an increase in assessment, depending on how the property is assessed now. If you were granted some kind of a reduction because of the condition of the house at one time, then we would consider it. But otherwise, no, normal maintenance normally does not constitute an increase. So we've...
I was just curious about that because that, now, $2,500 for normal, what I consider normal maintenance would be like roof shingles or whatever.
Right, right, that's not a large amount.
Oh, yeah, that's not very high amount for that, especially when you're hiring somebody else.
And so that's where it would be subjective.
Now, if you went and you cited your house, right, and that costs, say, $5,000 or whatever to cite your house, that's a major improvement, in my opinion. Okay? That's just my opinion.
But that wouldn't necessarily do...
It doesn't constitute.
No, that wouldn't necessarily constitute either. It's all based on what the current assessment is.
It did mine. It did mine, I will guarantee you it did.
There may have been other things that...
Over the years, it hasn't like today, but over the years, it did. And I asked a question when they did the reassessment countywide, right? I even went to the county commissioners, and they sent me a paper saying what the measurements of my house and all this was. I went and I said, no, I said, this is not right. Now, I said, I don't know who read the tape measure, but take a rework. Because I said, my house is 18 foot wide by 30 foot long, you know, my porch is 10 by 16. And they had the measurements all wrong, but they would not back off the tax increase.
Wait, you gotta...
We're kinda getting off one way or another.
No, I'm just saying, that's what happened in my situation, but...
Right, right. Normally, we would come out and remeasure to verify, but we use exterior measurements.
Yeah. Well, whoever measured it when they did that didn't know it right. I don't know who the company was that hired to do that, but...
Frank, you have any other questions for Mary?
No, I don't.
Anybody else have questions?
I understand, I agree with this Borough, it's not a whole new account.
No, it's gonna be all in Borough.
Yeah, that's something Borough Council has to do.
Well, that's what, that's what it currently has in there, the entire Borough.
I guess my only question, Mary, is the fact I don't see any continuity in how the properties are being assessed because it sounds like it's based on location. Because you're looking at certain locations of Borough, how they're gonna be assessed based on, they're proven at $2,500 or less, but if they do windows and a roof, it still doesn't mean they're gonna have a higher assessed value. So I guess I'm really confused on how these properties are being assessed.
I think, as I said, it depends on if a reduction had previously been given because of the property being in disrepair. A lot of these properties haven't been touched since the assessment, so they are in disrepair, but they still have quite a high value.
Because no one's ever come in to appeal.
No one's ever questioned.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Mary.
Any other persons to be heard? Okay, we'll continue on. Consent agenda. Just one thing to note on there, under E, the Mitchell County Babe Ruth, it states here that contingent upon the rest of the payment, they did make that payment in full today, just so everyone's aware before you consider anything. So take a look at that and, if there's anything anyone would like to discuss, we can pull that out. Otherwise, we will entertain some motions to accept the consent agenda.
Let me do a quick. I was approached by the Babe Ruth lady.
Okay.
Louisville Borough pays $250 usually for a bill.
Correct.
And so this broke the law. Their question is why if Little Lady won't pay, why doesn't Babe Ruth?
That was actually brought up to the record. And that was a very good question that they brought up, because there's no reason why there should be two charges for that facility use. So we were just gonna have one facility used for the Babe Ruth, and then, I think they were each paying, I think Stacy told me they were each paying...
Two of them.
Well, they each paid 125, and then they'll pay, but they do pay for the lights when they use the lights.
Yeah.
So they are, they're gonna...
So the P was lowered to 125 P?
Yeah, just to, yeah, so they're only paying for one facility use.
Okay.
Yeah, 'cause that wasn't right.
Okay, I would put it for that.
Yeah, 'cause there's gotta be 15 or 20 Little League teams that use that facility.
Well, that was their concern, why, you know, individuals, what you deemed, I'd say, other than...
Yep. Good question.
Anyone else? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor say aye. You have something? The consent agenda.
I didn't hear that in a motion, as part of a consent agenda requires action. Part E. That's what I asked.
Okay. Yeah, Jim made the motion, right?
Yeah, well, I thought that was a separate...
No, I'm sorry.
I know.
Okay.
No.
No, oh.
Take that.
Sorry. Okay, on to the regular agenda.
So, in the Borough's home, the council can adopt the resolution to dispose of anything under the threshold of $1,000, estimated fair market value of less than $1,000, excuse me, and the procedure in which we're disposing it. So in order not to cost to municipality, the provision that was handed out, there's one at your place there, if you would take a look over it for me. And it states that we would utilize all social media, any type of social media, to bid these items out, to dispose them. Municipet is an online tool that other municipalities have used. It puts the items the municipality wants to bid out, and there's no cost to the municipality. It does pass an 8% fee onto the buyer, in which the buyer pays directly to Municipet if we were to utilize that. But what we need is, in order to proceed, like, right now, we have some cell phones, a tablet, and some sodium vapor lights, an old black metal fencing for Woodlawn. We just would need council's approval to adopt this resolution, and then we could go ahead and utilize these, the social media, in order to bid it out, in order to get rid of it. So I'd like to see what council's wishes are on that, if they would approve that resolution.
We had public auction that, or did consignment auction?
I know that we have, like, you know, they bid out, if it's over a certain threshold, that we actually put it in the paper and...
Well, you know, you have a bunch of stuff laying around down there that doesn't have a lot of value, that, you know, just shuffle it off to an auctioneer in front of the consignment auction, get rid of it.
Yeah, we've never done, I've never done that.
It's an alternative.
Right, yes. Yeah, we could do that, too.
You could put that in, in the consignment auction, public auction. Your internet auction, the same thing, I mean, UniBid or even eBay, I don't agree to replace a bunch of stuff through eBay at one time.
So you want me to put in, including the consignment?
Well, some sort of an auction situation, yes.
I can do that.
What happens if you ship it to auction all of a sudden?
So you want me to put in, including the consignment?
Well, some sort of an auction situation, yes.
Yeah, I can do that.
What happens if you ship it to auction, all of a sudden the bid's $1,200? Then what do you do?
Yeah, then we have to go a different route.
UniBid here, same thing here.
Yeah, right. But I would, I would need council's approval with the contingent upon retaining that in the resolution, if they would approve it, and then we could proceed accordingly, if that would be okay with council.
No, I can... Second.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed?
Okay, thank you. You're welcome, thank you.
Rex here?
Rex is on vacation.
Do you have a report for us?
He was gonna be at your places tonight.
I don't have one, does anyone else?
I will make sure that gets on the site, the website, where it was supposed to be here.
Bob?
Okay, for month of March, fire department ran 21 alarms, one a quick breakdown, three of those were fired without minimal property damage. We ran 11 rescue medical emergencies. That can be anything from motor vehicle accidents with intrompment and injuries to medical assistance but cardiac arrest, three service calls. Well, the department does run a lockout service, if you lock your P's or vehicle or you have a child in it, we'll go and lock the vehicle for you. So we had three of those this past month. We had a good intent call, one of the residents locked themselves out of the house, so I sent the outer truck out, they went through the upstairs, went and came out there, then locked their doors, they're in their house. And three false alarms. So much before, we started our apartment training this year, on March 30th and 31st, we had a rope rescue class. On May the 4th and 5th, and October 5th and 6th, we have wire rescue class coming up. June the 1st and 2nd, September 14th and 15th, we have engines company operations class. And applications have been submitted for truck company operations and vehicle rescue technician class. The dates will be announced as soon as instructors are available. What'll be done with the department mail fund rate, drive, we hold every year, that brought in pretty close $7,000. So we took $1,200 off the top of that, and we bought a training package through Box Community College. They first, the instructors, they do the certification, then we use the State Fire Academy to do the actual field work. So that works out pretty good for us. And that also gives them a certification, rather than just saying, hey, I've done this year. They're actually certified in the business. Also, the firemen's leave at their last meeting, they brought up the subject of new year. They're in the process now of taking bids, and they found their way clear to buy 21 sets a year rather than 15. So with the 30 sets that the Borough bought for fire department the past two years, plus this year's Tommy, we have 41 new sets a year.
That's excellent. Thank you, Bob.
Mrs. Mary?
You're on again.
I have several things that I need to be brought before council. Over the last couple of months, we've been talking about this Dr. Parcells trust, and I have set up a board, I need everybody's approval on. As you can see, I have contacted Kate Hamilton, who's a former CEO of Louisville Hospital, Jason Cunningham, who's branch manager at Fish Bank, Dr. Charles Everhard, who's been a local physician here, Susan Hunter, who's on the Grand Old Township Planning Commission, and myself. And I would need approval so that I can get this group together and we can start working on this.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, thank you so much. Second thing is, this is my first quarter wedding report. Hopefully, they all stay married. I thought I was this far, I thought I could say. Rest it up to them. Rest it up to them. Another thing is, I was approached by the Alise network about they'd like to be able to put tin-colored ribbons down through town for sexual assault prevention month. And that is this month, actually.
Correct.
Okay, so I'd like to have permission for that to happen, I'll contact them.
Second. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, I have one more thing. Did everybody get the invitation to the Borough's Association, Littleton County Borough's Association? I don't know if any of you are able to come, I mean, it would be a nice thing to have, you know, representation from here, it's going to be down at that county this year, because we hosted it last, last time. And I contacted 87th and District newly-elected State Representative John Hershey, and he's going to be there to speak, that would be nice. And there will be people there from the FSAV. So, it's usually a nice function, food down there is good, I've been to dinners down at that range hall down in Fort Royal, so, you know, if you can, it'd be great, and all need to know here in Fort General, please, next week. Okay, and I think that's all I have. Anybody have any questions for me? Okay, thank you.
Chief Clemmons, you're up.
Okay, for the month of March, we had 609 calls for service to the officer panel, 153 traffic citations written, 15 non-traffic citations, eight written warnings. Parking, the parking ticket season has begun. We had 200 parking tickets issued, and our parking enforcement officer didn't start until March 25th, so that's within one week.
Was that sweeper?
No, that was his, that was his parking enforcement meter, so, or 73 street sweeper tickets were issued since April 1st. Written portion of civil service testing for police officer was conducted on April 6th, this past Saturday, in Mifflin County High School. We still have eight candidates after the written test, they're advancing to the next step in the process, which is the oral testing, and that'll be conducted over the next couple of weeks. We're hoping to have the testing completed, and possibly list the council by next month. Still accepting applications for some of our interns, we've issued probably about eight or nine so far, and that's open until April 30th, if anyone's interested, make sure you get application in by then. The laptop computers for the vehicles were ordered, and they should be in place shortly, once their IT company gets them up and running, so. That's all I have for now, I have a couple things for executive session.
Anyone have questions for chief?
Okay.
There's basically three things from rec board that need to be approved. The first one is approval of a rec park fee, a dollar per child for the Lumina Center, they've done it in previous years. The second is an approval for 10 free pool passes for use by the Mifflin County Library, they have a summer program that's coming up, and that's going to be like a prize. And the last one is approval to rehire Jackie Foltz as the rec pool manager for this coming summer. And those are the three.
Take one at a time.
Let's take one at a time, yeah, so. The Lumina Center fee of a dollar per child, we'll take that one first.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second one, the 10 free pool passes for Mifflin County Library.
I'm gonna take care of that myself personally. I'll pay for that.
Okay.
So, you don't need to take any action, I'll take care of it.
I'll thank you from the Mifflin County Library, and all the other children. Yes. And then the last thing will be the approval to rehire Jackie Foltz as the pool manager for this upcoming summer.
I have one, what happened to the young man that we talked to in personnel? Did he not submit an application, or?
Well, what hap, after that meeting?
Okay.
We subsequently found out that Jackie was interested in returning. During that meeting, we didn't think she was coming back.
Right.
So, what we did after the meeting, if we put it on Job Center, and we put it on Facebook, and we put it on our... Indeed. Indeed. And then she came in and decided she wanted to return.
I know, I know, he was pretty pepped up on it after he left that personnel meeting that day, and that's what, really what, what happened there. I have a question about that, I had no idea what he wanted.
Well, we discussed it at rec board, and rec board was very happy with the job that she did.
Well, I'm not saying she did a bad job, but again, draw them, but a young guy can do just as good, if not better, if you don't know.
Right. Do you mean if he'd be interested in being lifeguard? Have we reached out to him at all?
I just don't think it's too fair to him, but I understand where you're going to, why you want her to come back, I understand that.
Right.
But I think we need to be fair to him to, because we were really...
Kind of saying to him, right.
I mean, we had nobody at that time, really.
Correct.
Of course, we didn't have any interviews for, for ourselves.
We can touch it, we can touch base with him, if he'd like to be the lifeguard. I don't think he filled one out for that.
Yeah, the good news is, we have 14 applicants so far for lifeguard.
I mean, how many have?
14.
12.
It'd be nice if you did.
Offer him something.
Offer him something, because I, I know he was excited about it.
Right.
I have to answer one of the questions I have.
Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thanks, Laura. We're gonna have to, Mr. Lenny.
An Law Ordinance Committee was approached by one of the fire companies to discuss an ordinance that would allow them to recover some response costs. This is authorized by statute, it's been around since 2001. And specifically, what the fire company brought was a copy of the Brown Township ordinance. So, I put together a draft ordinance based on the Brown Township ordinance. It tries to make clear that it only has to do with certain types of responses by the, by the fire company, other than regular premise fire-related services. It has more to do with things having to do with motor vehicle accidents. I'm not super up on it, I tried to read a few articles about it. Apparently, many insurance companies have provisions for this already. So, I think for those people whose insurance company provides some coverage, they, the insurance company would pay for some of this, but I don't know that all insurance does provide this type of coverage.
I think there's been issues in the past with insurance companies and the fire companies, you know, fire companies don't even, not getting paid by the insurance company, I understand.
It was my understanding from Mr., from Ryan, when he came and discussed this, that if the person doesn't have insurance, they're not necessarily billed for this.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
Is that your understanding, when he talked?
They use a third-party person to go after the, the person that was in the accident.
May I speak a second to Mr. President?
Absolutely.
I'm gonna let, though, your, as, as Mark said, their main interest is building in the vehicle rescue business. If they have to use the jaws of life to remove a door, a roof, the dash, or whatever to extricate the person, they was interested in building that, just like Rees-Beele does for Brown Township. But, fire department can build, but if you don't pay, there's nothing you can do about it. Insurance, some insurance companies will pay, some won't, and if they don't, we can't force the issue. But they just like the opportunity to bill the insurance company, if they pay them, great, if not, there's nothing you can do about it.
Has Brown Bridge been proven successful at all?
They said they collect probably under 50% of what they bill for.
So, there's no third-party going after?
No, no.
No collection agencies?
Exactly. Insurance company doesn't cover, it's, it's all pressure.
Yeah, some places do use a third-party collection, and that's provided, that can be done.
Did you say you need more time to look at this, or?
No, no, this was just forwarded by Law and Ordinance to Borough Council, they, they voted to send it up for Borough Council to talk about whether or not it's something that council wants to enact or not.
I have no problem with it.
More from looking at this, and give in quotations, fire-related services, as well as in quotations, emergency services. Yet, there's no definitions.
Right.
In the ordinance, and when Bob gave his report to me, he had a whole laundry list of calls, people locked out of their car, people locked out of their homes, you know, are you paying any charges, that type of thing, Bob? Or how do we sort out what's, what gets charged and what doesn't?
Well, there's our services that we probably provide, a lot of fire companies don't, but the vehicle rescue business, there is quite a few outfits due charges for that.
Well, I can appreciate it.
Because you do have the expense, you know, your hire stories, your rescue equipment's pretty expensive, there's a lot of upkeep to providing maintenance.
Does this dictate what we can and cannot charge for, Laura?
They, they talk about response cost having, having to do with hazardous materials, that's really what the, the ordinance, or the statute's about. Down further, the second to the last, whereas, kinda says that, addresses that the borough does not desire traditional premise fire-related services, such as traditional structure and premise-related fire service to be built by, by the fire department, the property owners or their insurers. So, we've tried to differentiate those from, from other emergency services.
So, what you're saying is that paragraph there, is everything else, else open to charges?
That's what I would say, I said, any traditional fire in a premises would not fall under the ordinance, I think otherwise they could bill, the way it's drafted. And of course, Borough Council can, can address that differently, if you choose, this is just kind of how Brown's, this ordinance.
I don't see anything wrong with collecting what they can collect, you know.
There's a couple of companies that are buying equipment and stuff, wrestling tag their goals.
Basically, if they're not gonna charge an individual what they didn't take by the charge, like...
I have no problem with it, Laura.
Well, particularly, so, I just want, I just want it clear that you're allowing the fire service to build for almost anything other than premises related fires. I mean, it leaves everything wide open, Bob, for you to build. Then it's up to you, if you want to go for it, yes.
Well, like I said, the other things we've done there, except for responding, there's no expense involved, and the rescue business, like, vehicle rescue occasion, we do have some pretty expensive equipment, too.
So, you get into a hazardous waste situation, that could get out of control?
Well, the hazardous waste situations, generally, we work for the county, that and Phil Lewis, the Republic Safety Office, he's there, he coordinates and furnishes the equipment.
Who's gonna track the collections?
Fire company.
That's fire company. Well, I mean, I'm not a favorer, I think we're just nickel and dime in here, I just, I'm not, I'm not for it. How much money is Brown Township raising through there?
I can imagine we have to have.
I don't know.
Second.
Motion's been properly made in second, let's do any discussion, other than what we've had.
Well, this is an ordinance that has to be advertised?
Correct.
So, motion is to advertise the ordinance, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Let's do a roll call. Frank Barrier?
Yes.
Dave Campbell?
Yes.
Jim Felmy?
Yes.
Larry Seer?
Yes.
Mark Seaver?
No.
Will Wilson?
Yes.
Venus Shade?
So, we'll, we'll have to tie it up for next month.
Do you have any more?
No. That's it, really. I think after, in executive session, the chief had something, and I'll participate in that, otherwise, I'm fine.
Thank you. Mr. Roll?
Okay, at the, I'll start off at the planning meeting, the Mifflin County Planning Meeting last Thursday night, the borough was recognized for their support and contributions, both in kind and labor, towards the S.H. Rothamol walking trail. So, I proudly accepted this on behalf of Borough Council, pass that around. Second thing on my agenda, we've been, back in 2016, if you remember back, we did some refinancing of some of our bonds. We've been watching the markets ever since, and just recently, the treasury rates have dropped to a point where refinancing several of our bonds is attractive again. So, what I would like to do, there's two bonds, the Series 2012 General Obligation Bond, in the amount of, this would be the present value savings, in the amount of $105,914. And then the 2010 Series B Bond, in the amount of $261,000. So, that's a total of $367,000 present value savings, or $511,000 in cash, cash flow savings. What I would like to do is have approval from council to hire Stiefel, which Chris Hopper is the one that was involved with the last bond financing we did, as the bond underwriter, and then use a financial advisor, a bond financial advisor company, PFM, who is a division of Fliggett. You might recognize them, we have our, our corporate credit cards through Fliggett, and we've actually invested some money with them. And Frank asked me the question on, you know, why would you want a financial advisor? Well, a financial advisor in a bond refinancing situation actually only cares about the borough, where a bond underwriter in a financing situation has to worry about not only the borough, but they have to worry about the people that are selling the bonds. So, it's in, it's, you know, a financial advisor only cares about the borough. And the nice thing about, if you use a financial advisor, the bond underwriter cost comes down to the point that you more than make up for the cost of the advisor. So, like, in this case, if you look at the averages, it would cost us, if we did not have any financial advisor, it would cost us roughly $83,000. And that, those numbers I gave you are net, so everything I tell you about is already built into those numbers of the bonds. So, it costs you $83,000. If you use a financial advisor, the cost for the financial advisor is roughly $20,000, and the price of the bond underwriter comes down to $55,000. So, you're looking at a savings of around $14,000 by using a financial advisor that has the best interests of the borough in mind. So, Mark and I were talking about this today, and we actually touched a little bit about this at the finance committee, we had somebody, a representative from PFM, who was on the way to the school board meeting, stopped by here and give a presentation. Then they went out to the school board, and the school board hired PFM as their, you know, they're, they're selling a, a set of bonds to pay for the rehab of the Strogeville School.
They discontinue PFM.
Yep. So, what I would like, the beauty of this, we're not committing to anything unless the transaction goes through. So, the numbers I threw out there don't come into play unless we actually have a bond refinancing. But it doesn't, it's not like something you can say, we're gonna do this tomorrow, it takes time to get the ball rolling. You know, I'd like approval from rec council to get PFM on board, and Stiefel on board, to get the ball rolling on refinancing those two bonds.
I like the motion. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, thank you very much. Okay. Okay. Next thing on my list there, you can see we have, we now have a 1980 Cat, Caterpillar 910 wheel loader, which has approximately 4,500 hours that we need to get rid of. And we also have a 2003 Packer garbage truck that has roughly 26,000 hours on it that we'd like to get rid of.
Just for clarification purposes, I was looking at my spreadsheet today of all the borough vehicles, and it has this loader listed as 1979. So isn't it 79 or is it 1980?
I thought it was 79.
Ben? Ben, I got my information from one of my super buddies. So it could be a 79.
Year made and end year titled. Like on mine, I have the 2003 International Packer is a 2004. It was made in '03, it was titled in '04. It's the same with the loader, I assume.
Just the only reason I mentioned?
It's the same one.
Just the only reason I mentioned is as long as we don't get into some fine print issue with the vehicle or anything like that, that's all.
Okay. All right, so.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah. So I'm looking for approval that we can put these two vehicles out for bid and get rid of them. We're looking at, you know, Ben and I talked about the garbage truck, Tim and I talked about the wheel loader. We think we can get in the 5,000 to 10,000 range for both of, no, 5,000 to 10 for the garbage truck and 5,000, 5,000 to 10 for the wheel loader.
So do you need to place a minimum bid on either one of them or anything, or?
It's up to council. If you want me to do that, Mark, I'd be more than happy to.
Make a motion, but I don't have the bid.
With the minimum bid or no, Larry?
The way I stated it.
Okay, just making sure.
Second.
Discussion?
If you don't want to bid, you should get the bid. Don't want to buy minimum.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Platt's probably waiting for this next one.
It's ours property, it's yours.
Well, I'm looking forward to this next one, Dan.
If he shows up to tear mine down with that, I'm going to be unhappy.
I'm sure you'll be directing them. Okay, so we have, we are now the proud overs of those two properties. We have the deed in hand, and we had three bids to knock them down. One was for, one was for $36,000. That was from Nate's Construction. One was for 1802, that was from GNR Excavating, and we received a bid of 148 from Mike's Landscaping. So obviously, my recommendation is we award the bid to knock those buildings down, Mike's Landscaping, and we get, yeah, so we get going on getting that taken care of.
John, move.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Again, looking for approval to allow Wilt Vending to again run the concession stand at the Red Park Pool.
Show a move. Okay, what's the details on that? We getting 10% on that, or what's going on? That's what it was last year.
Yeah, it's the same as last year, Mark.
Show a move.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, and the last thing, I just wanted to bring you up to date on several of our projects we have going on. The first one I'm not happy about, but I don't have the authority to override PENDOC. So PENDOC came, was it, Tim, three weeks ago? They've changed the date for the Valley Street Reconstruction Project from '22 to '23. So I wasn't happy about it, but I wanted to make sure, because people are, you know, it's, I hear more about that street than any other street in the borough.
I'm looking at it too.
So that's that one. The Streetscape Phase 5 will begin on April the 22nd, and then begin on South Main Street, and then go around the corner. The South Main Street Bridge project has been let, HRI has, is the low bidder at $3.5 million, and that will begin on 4/30. And the, for anybody that might need to know this, the detour will start on May the 15th. So the first part, they'll be knocking down the building and, you know, preparing the site, but the detour will be in place, and it has a window of 5/15 to 11/4. Hopefully, they'll get it done quicker. I've already talked to the people at Kish Bank and informed them.
Both buildings on both sides of the street will be down loaded?
No, they're, just the, the one on the right, as they're coming in and down on the right. The other one, the first thing they're going to be doing is they're going to be building a new access ramp to the back parking lot. Because they're not going to be able to get through the current weight to that lower level. So that's the first thing you'll see happen.
So we'll come from the other side where the bank is there?
Come right down parallel to the drive-through at the bank, and then curve into that lower And then the Kish Street project, the bids are out, and we will be opening bids at the finance committee meeting at the end of April for your approval to see beginning of May for the mid-council meeting. And I do believe that's all I have.
Okay. Okay, the only thing we have on our unfinished business is finance committee, Mr. Seavers.
Okay, so what I'm looking at is approval for the 2019-2020 Live Bill and Workers' Comp Insurance Package. But before I present that, can you see in the audience?
Yes.
I can.
Hi, how are you?
I just want to see if you want to have an opportunity to say anything about your quote, and also, I think, probably, if you would like to touch on the appropriate dividend, also, and how we, the borough, qualified for that.
Sure.
Larry?
Is there anything you wanted to cover, or that you discussed with them? I mean, I just, I mean, I don't know from a comparison standpoint, I know we talked about some of the differences, but.
Right.
Okay. The quote we have is 3MC, which is the same carry that we had last year. We ended up moving for substantial savings last year. Some of the things that we noted, and I worked with Mark today, I've been working with Scott on some coverage differences, but we quoted all lines with EMC. The price came in around $168,82. There's also about $1,200 of terrorism coverage, which was rejected last year, so the price is a little bit less than that. Our package includes workers' comp, which covers the volunteer fire department. It also covers the Heart and Lung Compliance Act, as well as full prior acts on the directors and all the board of directors. Other than that, property values, we had around $38 million, which is based on the appraisal that was provided on replacement costs. It's basically it, nothing's really changed from last year, except for the price came down a little bit. Is anybody have any questions for me about any covered items?
Thanks, Keith.
Thank you. So, so based on, so based on the quotes that we got, we got, you know, of course, EMC, and we also have from Argonaut. Between the expiry policy and EMC quoting Argonaut, you're looking at saving with EMC over, a little over $42,000. With Argonaut, they come a little bit last week, saving about $13,000. So my recommendation is that, based on this, I'm recommending with, with the program dividend, that we go with EMC on the renewal. And their price is $167,715, Argonaut's is $154,943.
I'll just make a motion. Drop like that. I'll tap the chairman's board.
Thank you. Okay. Second, discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, lastly, we had, I need approval to purchase its budgeted, the 2019 Ford F-150 four-wheel-drive refuse pickup truck. It's in the Capital Reserve. It's through Lake, who's CoStar's dealer. It's $23,682, and it's to replace the 1994 Chevy 2500 that has iron, over 18,000 miles on it, which it did not pass inspection.
Mike wants his graphic pictures.
So I'm looking approval for to purchase.
Yes, would you have a motion in the second discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone have anything from the public?
I just have one thing I want to make mention.
Hold on a sec. One sec.
Yeah.
On the river, on the River Trail, yes.
There is no signs down there for dogs to be on leashes.
Correct.
People are letting them run, and so people are afraid that they're going to be knocked down by these dogs, so I don't know if you want the signs up, or you want to put something out, but it's something that you probably want to look at.
Thank you. And on the River Trail, I know it wasn't mentioned yet, but there were several of us, along with a Boy Scout troop that went down on Saturday and picked up trash. Twenty-five thirty bags of trash were gathered, and I see you shaking your head, John. Honestly, it wasn't trash along the trail so much as the bank from the houses. My guess is that for the last 10, 15 years, people have just dumped things down over, you know, it happens, but those young nimble children were able to climb up there and get those, some of those items, so it looks much better, and it was a good way to spend a Saturday morning, so.
And not so nimble.
And not so nimble.
Speak for yourself as well.
I am.
But yeah.
I especially liked your picture.
Yeah, no dumping.
Yeah. You found an old beat up sign that said, "No dumping."
It wasn't up anymore, so maybe that was a problem. But thanks for making us aware of that.
Sure.
Now, Mr. Valmy.
Just one thing. Earlier in the week, I know Lieutenant Governor's been down here talking about recreational fire monitoring, gathering people, and I know you were there, but that's different. But anyhow, it came across the news the next morning about Nina Shade, the Borough Council. I'm not sure you introduced yourself.
I did not.
And the way they brought, put that, several people approached me, saying, is the Borough Council paper in recreational fire monitoring? I said, no, I can't speak on behalf of the other people. There are people there of different views, so I just wanted to know from the public if this council.
Yes, and I did not introduce myself as such. If you go back and watch the video, I only indicated my other.
Well, it was on the local news that way, and I thought, well, you know, that's, a couple of people approached me.
Correct. No, it was not. And, yeah, so if you go back and look, I did not state my.
No, I wouldn't think you did.
Yes, it was simply a statement anyway, so, but no, I did not present myself as such.
I just wanted to hear from the public, because a couple of people asked about it. I said, no, that's not the case, we're not discussing.
No, when I speak, I speak for myself, not necessarily for the Lewis Town Borough Council Ward for South Hill School of Business.
Well, I can see how the news reported, so unless she's president.
Fine, everybody knows. So yes, yes, so. I'm sorry, Mr. Platt.
I'd like to thank everybody for indulgence in my issue. Even though I had to go bottom rule on the crude side, I commend you guys for doing what's right.
Thank you, and I acknowledge your patience.
Just make sure they get the right house.
Get one.
You still have that sign with the lights?
No.
Make sure you know.
I have it, but it's kind of dilapidating.
Okay.
When we go to the executive session, are we talking personnel at all?
We are.
Okay. I see Skinner's here.
He is.
I'd like to attend as part of the personnel at one point.
Okay. Okay, so I guess we'll go into executive session. Meeting is adjourned.
Recessed.
Recessed, thank you. You're welcome.